You can actually see me, I'm not sideways.
Steve, Donna, Andy, is Jeff with us yet? What about Ron?
Jamie, this is Ron, I'm here by the way.
Hey Ron, I saw your name, thank you. If everybody is with us already, if you could just keep your mics muted until it's your turn to talk, there's a lot of background chatter, it makes it very difficult for everyone else to hear, it'd be wonderful. And we'll get started, we're just waiting for one more who's usually with us, and we've got another minute here, we'll get started. One, two, three, four, we got enough for quorum, so we'll get started. Welcome, everybody. Hopefully we'll have some others joining us shortly. As Chair of the Barrington Planning Board, due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis, in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order Number 12, pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to the meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. However, in accordance with the Emergency Order, this is to confirm that we are utilizing Microsoft's team for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting through the Microsoft team, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen, and if necessary, participate in the meeting through dialing the following phone number, (603) 664-0240, or joining the meeting with a Team ID. We'll start with a roll call. I am the Chair, James Jensen. Jeff Brand.
Here.
Hi Jeff, Steve Diamond.
Present.
Welcome, Donna Masucci.
Here.
Andy Knapp.
Present.
Ron Allard.
Present.
And in addition tonight, we also have the Town Planner, Marcia Gassis, Code Enforcement Officer, John Huckins, and Administrative Land Use Assistant, Barbara Irvine. First, we're gonna kick the meetings to the end, so we can get to some business. Due to that last crazy storm, we'll pick up where we left off at number three, which is Joel Runnels doing a lot line adjustment for James Morrison, Rebecca Andrews, and Liza LaBelle, and Nicholas Donovan. Joel?
Good evening, I'm here, my name's Joel Runnels. I'm with Millway Place Associates. I'm here to represent this lot line revision for 129 and 159 Pond Hill Road. I believe where we left off was we had everything was all set except for my waiver asking for the additional work that needed to be done. The town required regulations were for the lot 11. And you're asking for a waiver to do the topographic, the wetlands, and the other, and the boundary survey for that parcel. My clients are here too, so they also sent a letter to the planning board. I hope the planning boards already read that. Again, our feeling is that doing these things is unnecessary. This lot 11 is already been developed, it's not gonna be developed any further. This is just an additional expense that doesn't need to be done at this time. This lot is gonna be combined with another nine acres, and that lot 11 will be then, one of the main reasons, one of the many reasons to get this parcel is that then they can also put it in current use. So, majority of lot 11 will go into current use as well. So, the reason that Land Use is saying that they need this done is so that in case, in the future, when a lot owner of this lot comes in to do something, they will know what, already what the setbacks are. But, there's no reason for this. And if that's the case, then that's fine. When they do come in, if they ever do come in, they can be required to do these items. But, right now, I don't see a reason to incur this cost on my clients.
Alright, yup. I think, yeah, I think we've got pretty far along before, I don't know if anybody, the rest of the Board needs more explanation from Joel. I think we can jump right into it. Before we go too far, I don't believe we've accepted the application as complete. If any of the Board members has questions as to application-related things, and an approval of the application would be in order first. Anybody?
Well, as I recall, we didn't, we didn't accept the application as complete because we were looking for that information on the 11. And couldn't we approve the waivers first prior to the?
Not, yeah, depends, some of them, I guess if this is an application waiver, we would do it first. So, we can, we can address that. It would be, I'm in like mind with Joel. I think that it's unnecessary to expect a full boundary survey of such a large piece of land that's not proposing any development. I think that a plan note indicating future development would require full boundary surveys and trigger new wetland buffers as, you know, per, you know, 2020 rules. I think that would be adequate, and I think we've done it one time in the past that I can recollect. The Board, any of the Board members have any opinion as far as full boundary surveys? No? Then I would entertain a motion to waive Article 5.3-5 surveyed property lines, specifically for the new area of Lot 11.
The existing lot 11, I should say.
Perhaps Marcia, you could review for us exactly where you are in your, I believe you were the one who was raising the objections before. Could you maybe say where you're at on that right now?
Marcia kicked herself out of the meeting, she's not in here right now.
It's, from the last meeting, Steve, and I'll let her speak if she gets back, obviously, but it was, it is required by rule that, you know, a full boundary survey be done. And, so they're requesting a waiver, and because they're not subdividing, they're not looking to build, they're not looking to add any structures to the property. So, I think it would be appropriate to then say, we could put a note saying any future development would require. If they were, if the lot line was going in the other way, and they were taking away from this piece, I may have a different opinion on it. You know, but they're adding nine acres to a piece of property, I can't see where that would be a detriment to Lot 11, you know? And that's where I've come to thinking, you know, since the last meeting. It doesn't make sense to me to add nine acres to a piece of property, and then think for some reason you're gonna have a higher standard when you're adding that much land, but I could be off, so I'm open to other people's thought process on it. And I think Marcia was just looking for accuracy of that lot for the future, you know, in our, you know, it, I think is where her head was at, you know, not speaking for her, but based off her comments.
Yeah, Jamie, this is Ron, I wasn't part of the last discussion because I lost my power, but I kind of agree with you that, you know, if we're taking land away from a lot, a property could become non-conforming, but we're adding it, I don't think that concern exists. So, I think I kind of agree with you at this point.
Jeff and Donna, do you have anything to add?
Did you say it's undevelopable, some of it?
I would not, I would not say that that is true, I'm sure there's opportunity there for someone, but it's a big piece of, big piece of land, and if they were going to come in for a subdivision, or something to that effect, then that would be the time.
You wouldn't be able to, because first off, if you see the wetland buffer that's on the lot 9, that butts a lot, uh, no, not a lot, a lot. On the nine acres that butts Lot 11, there's wetlands there, there's a buffer there. If you look at the topographic survey plan that I gave you, this is, they call it a mountain. So, I don't see any, any potential of any future subdivision out there at all.
Because they'd have to cross that wetlands and go up the mountain.
They gotta go through the wetland buffer, or through that, to a mountain, and they built a road that was to nowhere. So, they got a road that's 800 feet, they haven't even got a lot yet, it's just not feasible, something like that out there. This is just for their, I've talked to the ghouls, and it's mainly for their enjoyment of the property. They really enjoy that, that area out there, and they want it for themselves.
And I can appreciate, the best way to preserve property is do it privately, you know?
So, is Lot 11 has never been surveyed?
Correct. But, it had been gone through the process with the town, so the town had an opportunity when they did the building permit to build the building. It had a septic system out there, there was a wetland permit to do the pond, so all that always had gone through the town. So, I guess when all that was going on, maybe that would have been the better time to ask for additional information. But, again, if you, if you look at this on Google, or on a GPS map, or you go drive by it, you can see that, what more could these people do to this lot to develop it, it's done. Especially if you're gonna put the remaining land in that current use, you can't develop the current use area, so.
Yeah. Anybody else? I'd be, I'm certainly in favor of granting that waiver, if there's a motion in favor of it.
I think the only thing that gave me pause was the possible expectation that, that this be waived in all cases moving forward, not necessarily, more routinely, I guess. So, if it's not gonna be routine, then I'm fine.
Yeah, I like to be, I think, I like to think that we don't have a typical routine, we take each case by case. This one seems to be a unique situation where it's a large piece of land that's not, they're not asking to build on it, put a road in, anything of that nature. So, I can't see a reason why. I can see the benefits of doing a survey, of course, but I think the negatives far outweigh the benefits in this specific instance. I think I saw Marcia's back. Marcia, we were just, if you wanna add, we were, I, I'm in favor of granting the waiver of the survey of Lot 11. And I was kinda explaining myself, and we know that you had, did not support the waiver, and Steve was asking if maybe you could explain your point a little bit.
Sure, my, my big concern, and I'll tell you, it has to do with, we've consistently, oh, this was done kind of backwards from, from my perspective. Typically, what was done was the areas around where the building envelope is have had the wetlands and everything delineated. I don't have, I guess, kind of all ties together, so it goes back to the wetland delineation portion of it. We've consistently had them delineate the area where there's been development, and a lot of times has waived the excess rearage on this, but how they, how they designed this is kind of backwards. And he did a very good job of delineating, in this sense, all the wetlands on the back lot, not quite sure why, because we could have easily waived that portion. So, I guess the only part of the, and I thought he did, they did a survey. I'm a little backed up here, because I supported, let me go back. Sorry about that, my laptop just kind of went, and I've got a second one that I'm using. Okay. Surveyed lot lines. Okay, okay, here's my perspective, I don't have a problem with waiving the survey lot lines, but the only problem is how do you accurately define where the wetlands are if you don't have an accurate survey?
That's another waiver, that's why I'm asking for that waiver too, a wetland delineation on Lot 11. Try to not survey Lot 11.
Okay.
And I, and I think it's appropriate to put a plan note that, you know, any future development or, you know, building permits would trigger a full, you know, full wetland delineation and boundary survey.
Absolutely.
I think it's a, this is a fair reason to kick that one down the road. I mean, it's not what we want to do in every instance, but I think in this instance, it makes some sense.
Yeah, I agree with that, there's no construction, expansion, or modification to Lot 11, so, you know, it's, I don't think we need to know where the wetlands' boundaries are, because, you know, everything there is already existing.
So, so I don't disagree with that, I just, I'm all for consistency, and in the past, it did it the opposite. They actually identified where the actual building was, because that's the portion most likely to get impacted. And, you know, if the Board wants to do this, I'm fine with that, add the note, but we've got to consistently, in the future, we have to act in the same way. We can't do it for one and, you know, not the other. So, if you don't want me, you don't want to have wetlands delineation done on lots that have buildings on them, you know?
Well, what, what, no, I wouldn't say that categorically, but what's the circumstance which puts them in front of us? If they're coming to subdivide in a, in the opposite direction, or two lots out of one, then that's a different scenario, where they're adding to this property, that's where I have, I differentiate the two. Like, I'm thinking back to one that was on the lake where, you know, I don't think they went through with it, but they were gonna subdivide, and then all of a sudden, the new wetland deline, you know, the wetland buffers kicked in, and now their lot was useless. But, they were gonna subdivide. This is a subdivision of another property, and Lot 13 should certainly be, you know, delineated, but I don't see, understand, I guess I can't wrap my head around why 11 would be too, where you're adding nine acres to it, other than for the record, and I can appreciate that, but I think this is a good opportunity for a waiver.
Okay, as long as the understanding is those buffers do apply to that portion of the lot, to the entire lot, irregardless of what was added to what, so any future construction, and also any, you know, any digging, any, you know, any disturbance, that also applies. So, the thought pattern is that prevents having to, you know, police everybody who has an issue.
Right.
But as long as you're gonna do it consistently from this day forward, yeah, I'm okay with that. But it's, it is a switch in the way you've done it in the past.
Well, I think, Marc, we're not trying to change the rule, we're just, we're talking about a waiver in the specifics of this case for that waiver, if they justify it. I don't think it's setting precedent for anything down the road, unless we get one exactly like this.
Right, I wanna be consistently inconsistent with my waivers. Alright, so if there's no further comment on that one, I think we can, we can pick off some of these waivers. And Marcia, these, we were having some conversation, these should be done before the application is accepted as complete?
Yes, yes, in this instance, yes.
Alright, great. We are looking for a motion for waiver 5.35 surveyed property lines. Line went dead, or, we got no one jumping?
I don't have a draft.
It should be the survey of the property lines for the lot that's having land added to it, because he did survey all the property lines of the lot that's being made smaller.
Alright, for ease, I think. I will make a motion to approve the waiver 5.31, Parents 5, to not survey property lines on lot, the existing lot 11. I'm looking for the language. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
I'll second.
Motion by James Jensen, second by Jeff Brand. Ron Allard.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. 5.31, Parents 5, granted. Next, we have a waiver for existing grades and topography contours. The reason the plan shows the topographic contours on Lot 13 and the area being conveyed, no proposed development is being proposed with the existing development is being proposed with this application on existing Lot 11. So, staff does not object to this waiver, and it is the same kind of thing as the last one, being Lot 11 is not being touched, and the land is gifted to 11. So, looking for a motion for 5.316. I'll make the motion to grant a waiver for existing grades and topography for Lot 11, as it's, granting the waiver, not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant, and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Andy Knapp. Ron Allard.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand. James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand. Did we lose Jeff?
Aye.
There you are, sorry. I don't mean to be impatient, Jeff. Moving on to the next one, estimated location and use of all existing structures, a waiver for 5.31, Parents 8. These items are shown, subject partial.
That's been added, the waiver, I assume has been withdrawn.
Oh, yes, the note says it's no longer necessary, so we'll, we'll get rid of that one. And that is all, pardon me?
So, the remaining issue is 5.319, which requires wetland delineation on the remainder of Lot 11.
On the existing Lot 11, yup, sorry. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? I mean, that was kind of, obviously the same as one and six. Any questions or comments?
Well, the only issue there is that without them being delineated, how do the owners know where the buffers are, such that if they wanna do something to their own property, they know whether they've got to, you know, come in, in order to get approval to do whatever it is they wanna do.
They'll have to do the wetland delineation, that's why we're gonna add that note, that any future developments will be required, wetland delineation will be required.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm, a note stating.
You can see on my plan that, you know, I added the building, the driveway, the pond. And again, if you drive by there, you look at Google or whatever, you can see that there, there's nothing more that's gonna happen out there, and that with putting the remaining land into current use, it's gonna take up more than half of that lot. So, there is no proposed development by these, these lot owners, and again.
Right, well, I guess, Joel, what Jeff is alluding to, and it's a very reasonable thing, is this, whether it's a, you know, whether they go dig a woods road, and they go through the wetlands, or, you know, do something that they're not supposed to, and they go into the, the new buffer. So, I think the note of what the new buffer is, and, you know, if you're in violation, you're in violation whether you know about it or not, is certainly.
They're not gonna physically know where it is when they walk out there, it's not something that, there's a sign and the lights and stuff that shows them where it is anyways.
Right, no more than anybody else's lot, but by having it on the plan, there's a record of where that, where that new buffer is, and the rules that go along with having that buffer enforced. So, I mean, it's on, it's, it's their responsibility to know that they're not in the buffer, and just like any other property, if it was delineated on this plan, and they went and did something in the buffer anyways, it's the same consequence, if, does anyone disagree?
So, what exactly is this note gonna say?
This, this addition of property, some language that says this addition of the property has triggered a new wetland buffer concurrent with the current regulations, you know, 2020, that, you know, and, and if they try to do anything, if they do anything, they know, being on notice that there's new buffers there. I mean, I would, I would say they don't know the existing buffers. You know, I would say most people that are out on this Board don't know what a wetland buffer is, and where it is on their property, to, you know, to be truthfully.
So, Jamie, so, the, the buffers are about probably 50 feet from any of the, the edge of the wetlands. So, the concern I think Jeff is talking about, and that I raised, is in instance, and maybe on this lot in particular, but we don't know for sure that we, because we don't have wetlands delineation, but it is a very wet lot, which means this, this particular area of the lot is gonna have buffers even probably overlapping into the lotway. So, it is very important that, you know, nothing else occur on this lot without any kind of delineation. And, you know, that, that's the hard part from an enforcement standpoint.
Well, in particular, look at the lot line that's to be abandoned, there's a wet area right there on the lot line, but it's not delineated on the opposite side on Lot 11, just on the, the area that's in the current Lot 13. So, I suspect there's an area in there, and there's buffers that are gonna apply to that area in there, that, that aren't delineated. That's why if we're not gonna hold them to the requirement, and we want to use a note in the plan, I'm interested in what that note's specifically gonna say.
To me, Jeff, it'll say what we were talking about before. There can be no new construction, expansion, or modification without a full bounty survey and wetlands delineation.
Well, it's gotta include excavation also.
Yup, disturbance, yeah. Right, and I think, and a note referencing what the, what the buffers are today. It's not the old buffers when this lot was created, it's buffers created as of today. I think that's the one way around it. And again, I go back to the, whether you do the delineation or not, if someone goes into that area, the enforcement, first it takes someone to complain, and then second, you know, John has no enforcement mechanism to say, I've got a plan, and it looks like on the plan you're in the, he's gonna have to go out there and fight them to get a survey. That's the doubt. That's the downside of it. I think you're in it, I don't think I am. The back and forth starts, okay, well now you've got to go get a survey, well I'm not going to. You know, what, what does that conversation turn into? And that's, that's the problem. I don't have a problem with the boundary one, but that's the only hiccup I see with the wetland delineation, you know, I want to expand my pond, well you can't. I think I can, no you can't, now you're going to get a wet, now you're going to get the survey, well I don't want to. You know, I'm going to dig it anyways, you know, so that's-
These owners have never done that. They've gone through the right process all along, they've got wetland approval for, for the full pond that they've done. They're, they're very diligent in what they do out there. It's not something that's going to be destroyed out there. Again, just drive by, why would they dig up what's there? It's beautiful what they've got, it's all landscape.
And I don't doubt that, but you know, from a, I got, I got, trying to look at it from all angles and, you know, what the town may get when you and I are both gone and, and the Morrisons have sold or moved on or retired or whatnot. You know, trying to think of every aspect of it is, I think, our, our role here too.
By the way, did we actually get a request for a waiver?
You mentioned it and I see it on the note, so I assumed it's, it's in the stack.
It should be added, but we've never actually received, well, the notes say waiver from 5.319 must be requested. But we haven't actually received a waiver request. Is that, is that Marcia?
Oh God, I'm looking back. I know I have it in my recommendations, what require, it requires that.
But, but you made a note, a comment that must be requested, so you wouldn't have said that had we already received it.
Let's see.
Joel, could you submit a request?
I don't, I don't have anything in front of me that I submitted, but I, I sure hope, I thought I, thought it was all part of that whole thing. It may be because it was just kind of a generic that we did show wetlands, but I just didn't show it on that area. Maybe that's where I'm going with that, is that delineated wetlands, so I satisfied that requirement. We just didn't do it on that part of that parcel.
Would it be a-
Can I look at your letter of 14 noon where you requested waivers?
Well, Marcia, they can request a waiver right now, right?
I don't have a problem with that.
I guess we'll ask, we'll request that waiver then.
So I guess the two snags here are the, the procedural question on last minute waivers. Then the structural concern is around now the property owners are officially required, if we follow the letter of the rules, to do the wetland survey. But in the future, the code enforcement officer would not have the ability to require the property owners to do a wetland survey if they were concerned around wetland buffer issues.
That's not 100% true. I do have some type of enforcement.
Yeah, if we, if we say any disturbance, modification, expansion requires the full surveys and that, and that something happens and that wasn't done, then I think John has the enforcement potential.
Would you agree, John?
100%, if that's part of your decision on this, I could fall back on this and say you did that work, so therefore now you've got to supply those stuff that's required as part of that condition.
My question, sorry, my question would, is there anything that would fall, any kind of development that would fall below that threshold? I'm not aware. Is there anything that they could find themselves doing that, that wouldn't require that other paperwork? Does that make sense?
The stuff in 9.5 has a couple of things that can go on in the wetland buffers. So if they do anything that's allowed to go in wetland buffers, they can still do it because it's already allowed. And there's also, I think it's in, it's in 9.5 or 9.4, that if you get a wetland crossing, you're allowed to go through the buffers to get to the wetland crossing and back out. So if they did do a logging access road going out there and they went through DES to get the crossings to make that road, they have a right to go through the buffers and back out in order to get access to that backland. But that's already a straight up allowed in that regulation.
But once again, John, that, that would assume that the, the wetlands and buffers are identified, so even that wouldn't be allowed unless they do the survey first.
Well, yeah, because, well, actually it would be because whether the buffers, because you're allowed to go through the buffers to get across the wetlands by that thing. So once they get across, show the wetlands to get a crossing through DES, there's a 50 foot buffer to those wetlands. It's automatically put in there, but they still have a right to cross it. Now, if they do anything other than those types of things, then that wetland buffer would have to be delineated so we could make sure that they, either they didn't do it or they had to come into the planning board and ask for a 9.6 in order to do it.
Yeah, but John, DES won't approve it without it, without a delineation. If they're going to ask for a, a wetland, a wetland's buffing crossing, they're going to want delineation and they want to make sure you're doing a minimum impact. So even if you go to DES, you're going to have to do it.
Right, he'll have to, he'll, he'll have to delineate the wetlands for that stuff he does that he gets a permit from them.
The, the, the buffer portion though, you got to remember is, the buffer is a local ordinance. The state doesn't enforce any kind of buffers, only the wetlands themselves.
Right, so from our, from our perspective as, as a town, it would be sheds and similar pole mounted structures. Would, you know, under 200 square feet would be allowed if, if, if you were to be specific. And, and, you know, poster pilings that's permitted an obstructed flow of water. Forestry, farming, agriculture, grazing, open space wildlife refuge, et cetera, things of that nature are all permitted in wetlands and their buffers. So regardless of size and scope of the wetlands and buffers, that, that activity could be performed in them regardless of where they are.
And to have them delineate when there's something they can do in it anyways makes no sense. It's if they want to do something that's not allowed, then you'd want the delineation.
If they want to put a shed that's 205 square feet, then they'd have to come and get a building permit and then trigger wetland delineation and all that stuff.
Correct.
Thanks for explanation.
So if that seems reasonable to everyone and we'd like to waive that contingent upon that note being in there. In the sake of consistency, I'll make a motion to waive 5.31, parents nine, wetland buffer delineation for existing lot 11. Not granting the waiver would pose an unnecessary hardship to the applicant and granting the waiver would not be contrary to the spirit intent of the regulations.
Second.
Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Ron Allard. Ron Allard?
Aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Donna Masucci?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Aye.
Jeff Brand?
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. 5.31, parents nine is granted. We'll move on quickly to application as complete. Someone would like to make a motion to accept the application as complete?
I make a motion to accept application 207-11 and 13-20 as complete.
I'll second it.
Motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Andy Knapp. Ron Allard?
Aye.
Andy Knapp?
Aye.
Donna Masucci?
Aye.
Steve Diamond?
Aye.
Jeff Brand?
Aye.
James Jensen, aye. Application is accepted as complete. We have no comments from the fire department or the conservation commission, police, road agent. No other comments. Does the board have any other questions or concern before I read the draft notice of decision?
And you'll have to modify that as you go down, Jamie.
Yes, let's talk about that so I lose my spot. Where's a good place to put that? Like numbered, below number two, add it to number two, do you think?
No, I'd leave two separate, probably a separate, a whole separate number, let's see, one, two, three.
We can use, oh, it looks like it was-
That would probably under-
Oh, redo three? It looks like we got three crossed out if we unstrike three.
Unstrike, yep.
Any disturbance, and it would read something like this, any disturbance outside of deline, outside, any disturbance on lot 11 requires wetland delineation and full boundary survey.
Jamie, I think I would add a little extra note there as along the lines you discussed. Any disturbance or modification, except those specifically authorized by town ordinance.
Any disturbance. Modification. Other than-
Except those specifically, yeah, specifically permitted by town ordinance.
Do I, should I cite 9.4?
I think that'd be good, yeah, that'd be good.
Right, so it reads-
It's 9.5, isn't it?
I'm looking at 9.4, 9.5 is wetland buffer areas required, permitted uses and structures is 9.4.
Okay.
Would that, would that, would that be the right cite, citing?
Correct.
Okay, correct. So as it reads now, any disturbance or modification on lot 11, other than permitted by 9.4 would require wetland delineation and full boundary survey. How do I, I got to add something stating-
Do you want a boundary survey or full survey?
Same thing.
Same thing, okay.
Well, if you're going to do something, you know, if you're going to do something within the lot, I think that would have to be identified. So I don't get just the boundary you want, we wanted, if you're going to do something inside of the lot, you'd want that surveyed as well, right?
From a technical standpoint, is it this, I guess what you're saying, Marcia, is a, is a boundary, well, you want structures, how would you encompass structures and?
You gotta get a building permit.
We're getting, I think we're, we're adding a little too much almost.
They're going to get a building permit, they put a structure in, and then the ones that take care of getting wetland delineation.
Pardon me?
If, if they're going to go for a building permit, they're going to go see John.
Right.
So they're not going to put, so why cover structures and building structures where that's going to be coming on the John jurisdiction and then that John would require setbacks with wetlands and buffers and property lines and everything else.
Right, but typically if you come in and there's a existing house on a property and you kind of draw 25 feet or 10 feet, you know, he looks at it and says that's reasonable, but if this thing, property hasn't been surveyed and we're waiving the survey of that property today, we're pushing it down the road.
John would know that, just like any other parcel that hadn't been surveyed. He's, he's going to require that part of the billing process. I, if, if, after they do, do something, then John also has a process of doing a, a foundation location plan that's required by a land surveyor, so.
You don't need to, even though it's the lots that large, it's only lots under an acre.
No, he's talking about the foundation certification, not the certified block plan. He's correct, and those in the foundation cert actually says you've got to show all wetlands, buffers and boundaries.
Okay.
That's actually what's required.
So the board feel comfortable leaving out a full boundary survey and sticking to the wetland topic?
I do.
Okay. And I just, I, I feel it's appropriate to mention the wetland buffer as of today and not when lot 11 was, you know, was created, just so there's no confusion as to what rules were going by?
Yeah, there's no buffers or setbacks on 11 today before this.
Right.
Right, so you ought to note that, you know, with this, that wetland, wetland and wetland buffer regulations in effect on 18 August 2020 apply with this approval.
Do you want to do that or you want to do current standards when the application comes in?
No, should be now, you're approving it now.
Marcia's 100% right. Yeah, now it's, now it's a new lot.
Okay, all right, I think I got it. Anything else that I need to change before I read through this?
Did you add that he's going to supply a written request for that waiver?
I did not, but I'll put that under number one, add written request for waiver. All right, if, all, along the way, if I forget anything, just cut me off and help me out. Dear applicant, this is informed by the bearing and plat board. As of its meeting, it has conditionally approved your application referenced above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all of the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. Conditions precedent, add the owner's signature to the final plan. Add the wetland scientist stamp and signature to the final plan. Add written request for waiver for 5.9, 5.31, parents nine. Add plan note with the waivers that were granted. And 5.31, parents five, 5.31, parents six, 5.31, parents eight, and 5.31, parents nine. Three, add a note to the plan stating any disturbance or modification on lot 11 other than permitted by 9.4 would require wetland delineation of buffers in accordance with wetland buffers as of August 18, 2020. Make the following plan revisions. Is that relevant? Is that for the other? 5.31, parents five, add surveyed property lines included angles and bearings, distances, monument location of the entire parcel. Do I need that in there? Or is that for the 13 too, so?
If we've already waived that for a-
All right, sorry, cross that one out. And I can cross out, C, right? Number four is omitted completely. At number five, the applicant's survey shall certify in writing that the bounds and pins have been installed according to the plans. Any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. For lot line adjustments, the applicant shall submit to the land use office a copy of the signed and notarized deed which will affect the conveyance of the subject property before the plat is certified by the planning board. Once the plat is certified, the deed must be recorded simultaneously with the plat. For lot line adjustments where the property is in the same ownership, deeds incorporating the adjustment must be provided. Final drawings, five sets of large black line plus one set 11 by 17, final approved plans must be on file with the town. Each individual sheet and every set of drawings must be stamped and signed by the land surveyor, engineer or architect responsible for the plans. If there is a significant changes to be made to the plans as specified above, one full-size paper check print must be sent to the planning department for review prior to producing these filed drawings.
Can we just go back to four? I just want to make sure we have it, okay, so waivers were granted for 5.315, right? Survey property lines? Okay, so we should, we need to, to add, put that on the plan. Let's see, now did we, with the estimated location of all the structures, that was one of the things he went out and actually did, correct?
Correct.
Correct, that was done, so that one totally gets crossed out. Now, in the notice of decisions, so you could skip asking for that waiver, it was written that 5.31 parentheses nine, add the net, that one, he waived. So I don't think we need to go back and make him, bring, bring us a an application if we write into the- an application if we write into the decision it was granted.
Okay.
Okay, I just, I mean, that's just an extra piece of paper, I don't think we necessarily need.
Alright, I'll clean it up. So are you fine with, so there's no number four, Marsha, am I correct?
I, I didn't have one on this, um, you moved, you actually, we re-in- inserted three, correct? And that's what we put, that's actually, well, actually, now, now did we insert 5, 3, 9, if we actually have 5, 3, 9 down here as C?
If that waiver was granted, do we need that number four?
Oh, you know what we used, 3, 4 was for all that verbiage.
Yeah, yeah, 3 is.
The verbiage.
Yeah.
And then leave the, leave number C there. It letter C, right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does to me. Alright, we are looking for a motion to approve. We've made it this far.
Uh-oh, my lights are flickering.
Just like my computer was and went out before, thank God I had two laptops.
Luckily, the last time that happened, I lost power before, but I was on two computers and one was the laptop that was on its battery, so I was saved.
Alright, I will make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for 207-11 and 13 GR-20-LL. Second that. Motion by James Jenison, seconded by Steve Diamond, uh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye, good luck.
Thank you very much, boys.
Thank you for the patience with the weather.
And stay well, everyone, thank you.
Alright, take care. Number four. Number four, number four. Uh, Journey Church, thank you for your patience, a request by applicants, Kids Culture for a propose to use 8,600 square feet in Journey Church for childcare and before and after school care. What do I see, I'm looking for a name. Who do we have here for Journey Church?
John and Erin Kinnifer.
Welcome, thank you very much, for your patience, sorry about the weather last time, I know you guys are trying to get this done quick before school opens up. You wanna give us a little rundown?
We have Kids Culture occupies two other locations, and this would be our third location that we're hoping to be able to provide Barrington, the community, um, a childcare learning facility for before and after school care, it's six weeks although you're 12 years old.
Hold on just a minute, I'm gonna mute everybody and then you'll have to click back in so we can get this background noise out.
Sure.
Okay, now you can log back in.
Okay, can you hear me okay? I can't hear.
Well, because they're all muted.
I can hear you, I can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you, but the background noise is now gone.
Awesome. Okay. So do you want me to give you a little background again?
Yes, please, yep, continue where you were, thank you.
Culture Childcare has two other facilities, we have one in Dover, one in Somersworth. We would like to be able to have one in the location of 8 Eastern Ave in the Journey Church. We are not affiliated with the Journey Church, we are a for-profit center. So we would love to be able to utilize their beautiful facility to be able to offer Barrington um, and the surrounding towns, the, um, services of childcare and, um, before and after school care and remote learning, especially for the schools that are unable to open at this time.
Excellent, I appreciate you trying to do that, it's a crazy time we're in right now and a lot of people trying to figure stuff out, so, um, does the board, uh, board have any, uh, Marsha, we have everything for the application, to accept the application as complete. I see there's.
There is, um, and you can do this after, it's a waiver in regard to parking, but, um, that, that you can do after it's accepted as complete.
Alright, so, um, if the board has any questions in regard to application submitted items, um, we could try and cross those off the list right now, um, before we move on to some more specific stuff, maybe.
Uh, one of the questions, apparently, correct me if I'm wrong, currently Journey Church uh, is allowed to have 48 children in there. And you're proposing to go up to 160 maximum?
The state will actually, um, tell us how many children we're able to have. We have a licensing coordinator that comes in and they actually measure the square footage, and by state licensing, I mean, we have to follow state licensing rules and regulations. So per DHHS, we have a certain square footage allotment for the children.
So I, I guess where I'm getting to is, apparently, if you wanna get beyond the 48 number, you're gonna have to use portions of the facility that the fire chief says you would have to install a sprinkler system?
That is, before we get our license, we have to get approval, yes, from these, um, fire and from health code, and then licensing comes in and gives us a permit.
So why, why was? Okay, so, uh, what is it about this, Journey Church was approved for a certain years, certain occupancy level, um, but something's changing that now fire chief thinks that, that a, a sprinkler system would have to be installed. So.
That's all being, um, reviewed right now, so it's in the process of being reviewed.
That's building and fire code, and that will be addressed after your approval, your approval is for the use of the building, and then they have to comply with building, fire and health codes before they could get their permit for occupancy.
Correct.
And just, and just to clarify, Jeff, I think the, uh, the 48 was put in there for our edification, knowing that the site plan was approved for childcare usage, so we could see that there was thought, you know, so if we're looking at, if we're looking at a new use, we'd have to address that in a different way, and I think that by, by knowing that it was previously approved as a childcare facility, even though smaller, it's been looked at through site review. And I think that's why that's put in there, so they were using a much smaller space for 48, now they're looking for a bigger space for more kids, but it did go through site review, and I think that's why that information was there.
Was that a commercial, uh, daycare before in the church?
There was the Good Shepherd School and that went through, that's how it got vested, they got approved and it was open under Good Shepherd School for that use.
Well, I, I mean, one of the things is, these I'm asking, if you go back to the regulations, it says that the applicant shall provide a written report documenting the required information, and that information, you know, with respect to the flow rates for the fire protection system. And it, and that's just to certify that if you have to do that as part of your application, you say, yeah, whatever water source we got can handle that, uh, so I'm just wondering what to do with that, and that's why I'm asking, so.
Jeff, Jeff, um, with our conversation with the attorney, and I think I, I share this with you, one of the things is, the only thing you can really focus on in this particular re- review, because this is just, it's just an expansion of what they were doing, this is, this is not, this is not a whole new application, it's not an opportunity to look at over and reevaluate their application, it's just the changes, in particular, you know, how many extra parking spaces did they need in the traffic flow, and if that is impacted at all by the additional children, that's pretty much it. The rest of it in regards to fire and the amount of water needed for the system and all of that is something that would need to also be, um, approved, but it's not by the planning board, those are things covered through the fire chief, code enforcement in the state of New Hampshire.
Although the regulations say the board may require modification of the site design to enhance public safety after the fire chief weighed in, so he's weighed in, and that's why, I, I mean, it's kinda nebulous, we talked about it. I, I wanna know what to do.
Can you tell me where you're reading from, Jeff, just so I can lay eyes on it?
Well, there's two parts, uh, 4, 5, 3 talks about the report about the water system, and 4, 15.3 talks about the letter that was sent to the fire chief, police chief, asking them if they have any issues. And that the board may require modification of site design to enhance public.
So the fire chief currently has not expressed any issue, he's gone back and forth, anything that would involve the planning board in any way. The things he mentioned, and one of them was the, the fire pit, and I did put that in the draft notice of decision, although that's something the fire chief could very well, because that's the fire rule, he could very well have handled that himself and didn't necessarily need to be in that draft notice of decision. Um, anything at all, we, they have, um, a professional designer of fire systems that's evaluating the building. Um, any of those type of mechanical things, those systems, those are all approved by other entities other than the planning board. The planning board in this should look at this as very simple application. Does the additional children in any way, um, cause an issue or affect, um, the circulation or traffic or parking?
I, I'm sorry, I disagree, it.
That was what my question with the attorney involved, um, what, and she was very clear that this was not an opportunity to start reevaluating the, the, um, entire application, this was just, what do these additional children, what effect do these additional children have on?
And, and Jeff, this is rather reminder, when the, the sprinkler plan, they're gonna do a flow test and a pressure test before they do the sprinkler, the sprinkler design, because lower pressure will mean more heads, all that kinda stuff, so that all has to happen before the sprinkler plan has to be done.
Yeah, I, I'm with, um, when it comes to capacities of that nature, I mean, if they don't have enough water to sprinkle the system they put in, you know, there's other entities that are not gonna allow them to have children in there, so I, stuff of that nature, um, I, I don't always agree with maybe even the lawyer when she says, you don't look at that, but you can look at traffic. They're both the same to me, you're looking at, you know, can, can the new occupancy hand upgrades handle, you know, the, the new occupancy? So I, I guess I don't know why you can look at traffic, but you can't look at sprinklers, but I don't wanna look at how the sprinklers operate when that's someone else's purview, um, if they say they're gonna sprinkle it if they need to, then I'm satisfied by that. Um, and, and I, I think our time can be better spent, um, you know, on other specifics that maybe are less controversial as far as whether we have purview over them, um, but, you know, like the parking, you know, there, there's minor issues with the parking that, you know, we can address type stuff, um.
Well, Jamie, I think the difference is, we are looking at parking and, and traffic and, you know, no one else is gonna look at it after us, but, um, someone is gonna look at the sprinkler design after us, so that, in professionals.
Right, thank, thank you, yes.
Jamie, also, they may wanna note that, um, the Department of Transportation District Six did, um, issue a letter just today in regard to, um, the, because they exit, next it, where, enter and exit where Federal Savings Bank or Bank of, well, I can't, they changed the name on it, but, um, they did, they're gonna send a letter, um, that, and I think we might have gotten it in your packet in regards to, they don't see any issues with that, there's already a turning lane for the Federal Savings Bank Church entrance that they share, so DOT doesn't have a, have an issue with this. Which I think is important, there's also a letter in there, um, from, um, is it first, what do we call it? I wanna say, I'll just say Federal Savings Bank, there's a, actually a long, um, here, letter from, uh, from the bank in regards to, um, kids culture and how, um, Dana Lynch, who actually is, uh, an engineer, stated that they don't have an issue, and if there is any kind of issues, they would be able to resolve it. So that's from, that's from, from the bank. Because they're the ones who sha- share the access.
Right.
First New Hampshire and shares it with the church, and they don't have an issue.
Yeah.
Before we get into those specifics, maybe it's time to accept it as complete, Jamie?
I, I would, I would like to if there's not, I know, I know that the sprinkler flow rate thing was kind of an application thing, I think that's where Jeff was going, but, um, I would like to accept the application as complete based on the nature of it, I think that it's, it's appropriate, and then we can ask more detailed questions, uh, a motion?
We do have one waiver request, though, right on parking?
Yeah.
We can do that one out. So if we got a, a motion to accept the application.
I make a motion to accept this application as complete?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
A motion by Steve Diamond and seconded by, uh, Andy Knapp, uh, Ron Allard.
Aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand. James Jenison, aye, Jeff Brand.
Nay.
One, two, three, four, five, five, application accepted as complete, um. So now we can move on to questions, we got a, the proposal, hours of operation, 7 AM to 6 PM, potentially licensed for 160 kids, ages six weeks to 12 years, before and after school's care, pickup and drop-off at the front door. The waiver is for the parking, correct?
Uh, correct, Jamie, um, the requirement under our ordinance, um, is actually quite a bit, but they have over 100 parking spaces existing, the, um, the church.
Our, our ordinance says 130 spaces should be required.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they're short 28 out of, so they've got 102 and it looks like they've got 130, I mean, required 130 based on that number of kids, and that could change depending on approval. If they get approved for a couple less, then that parking might not become an issue, but, um, they have 102, pardon me, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, Jamie, so correction, what we, what I did was add both uses together, and that's the thing, it's when you add what's required for a church and what's required under the ordinance for the daycare and combine them, that's what kicks you up so high, um, the, but that they don't, they may share the same space, but they don't operate at the same time.
Correct.
And also, I think, Marsha, here, there's a lot of drop-off in pickup, they're not really parking, so that's.
Right. This is almost, this is almost entirely drop-off and, and pickup.
Correct.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna read through the planner's comments real quick, just so we, I think we've all read them, but, um, we've got letters from the bank, um, they've, they've noted what they anticipate for drop-off numbers, if everyone's read that letter. I think if I'm reading from memory, it was 30, um, 30 automobiles Monday through Friday, um, per hour for the morning hours, and again, 30, 20 to 35 in those afternoon hours when school gets out, 2:30 to 6, roughly, um. There's, uh, we're assuming lighting in the area of the building, um, was pro- approved on the prior site approval. Uh, fire department and state require lighting for proper ingress and egress from the building, uh. So I don't think there's too much concern. So I don't think there's too much concern. Does the board have a lot, any other questions or questions to start? I'm sorry, I've kind of been rambling.
Is the distribution of timing for, for morning arrivals of about 30 an hour, is that realistic? And does that fit the pattern of your other sites?
To give you an example, we have a facility in Dover in the McConnell Center, and that's on a one-way road. Very, very tight drop off timeframe that we have in that facility. There's really no parking whatsoever. So with that whole facility, we have approximately 68 children that are getting dropped off. We have no more than four cars at the most ever in a line. So we have never had any issues, never any complaints. We're right down the street from the courthouse. So we have had no issues whatsoever, and we've been operating over a year in that location. So in regards to drop off, pickup, before and after school care, or our summer camp program that we're currently having right now, we've had not one issue. Because, I mean, they drop off so quickly and pick up so quickly. And especially with COVID, the parents don't park and come in because we don't allow parents in the building at all.
I'm just noting from the letter from the first Seacoast bank, she, she did say that in general, she didn't have major concerns. She mentioned in the morning was where there was the primary concern, and with the stuff around COVID, sometimes they've had backups with their drive-through situation, which they think is behind them. So that was the nature of the concern, as I saw.
Yeah. And we have a plan.
To queue cars in the parking lot.
So with COVID, you're not taking temperatures? What are you doing? Because I do have a childcare center in Barrington. I have 43 parents that line up, and it comes out on Commerceway. So I'm kind of interested how you plan to work that.
How we plan to work, what specifically? Are whole policies and procedures regarding COVID?
Oh, definitely not.
I don't understand that, I'm sorry.
Off and pickup, because there is a procedure now with the CDC about taking temperatures and stuff like that. I'm not sure-
We do take temperatures, absolutely.
That creates-
Do everything for, that state requires.
Are you doing that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Donna, is there an extensive amount of space in order for them to queue if necessary on the property itself?
Yep, absolutely. And we follow all state guidelines. We've had no children. We've been open through the whole COVID. We did not shut down at all, and we've had no children or staff or anybody, thank God, have COVID. We have extensive cleaning and disinfecting and all that.
All right. Any other questions from the board before I open public comment? Hearing none. Open public comment at this time. If you have a question, please feel free to speak up. I'll try to look at the conversations in case anybody types something in. Anybody? Hearing no questions or comments, I'll close public comment. Do we have any other questions from the board?
Yes, playground in the back with the parking in the back. How are you going to proceed that? Are you going to let the children go out? What ages? And how are you going to cross that back parking lot?
Everything is going to be the way that state tells us that we have to have it. So there's crosswalks already on the back parking lot. The kids use the crosswalks. The facility is a beautiful facility, which really blessed the children. And of course, it's all based on state regulations. We have to have a fenced in yard. We follow all regulations.
Jamie, also, I can add, there is, the prior approved plan does show the play area and a basically kind of a temporary gate that they can move to, to close off. So they were things on the prior approval that are part of this.
And it is a gate area. With the appropriate square footage per child based on state licensing for the outside playground area.
And one of the comments on the draft notice of decision, this area must be gated into remote locations, and that was added per the fire chief.
Yep.
And there, one thing, I was, I was out there today, and there is a walkway to the Burger King, which is not, is not enclosed in any way. I'm sure that's new, because Burger King is new. But it seems like it might be something that might attract the kids over there. So I don't know if we need a gate for that or some kind of precaution for that.
Our children are never not supervised by an adult at any time, so there would be no ability for a child to be able to walk without having a teacher there. And that's all, again, state licensing rules and regulations, we have to follow those. Our teachers will probably enjoy being able to go over to Burger King, though.
On their break.
On their break.
I would tell you, I parked in your parking lot over there, and I almost got hit. So have to be careful.
Yes, absolutely.
I think, Jamie, it's important to note, even, and I think, I think the applicant brought it up, even when this is approved by the board, there are multiple reviews that go through the other agencies before these folks can actually begin to operate.
Correct.
I mean, I feel fairly comfortable. I mean, it's such a large facility, there's ample parking, lighting, anything of that nature seems to have been well in place over the years. You know, trash removal, things of that nature. I'm not terribly concerned about any of those things, because I think they've all been well addressed and figured out over the years they've been in service, you know, whether, you know, from days when it was a mall to now when it's a church. But I don't, you know, so for me, I'm pretty, pretty comfortable. As long as the rest of the board doesn't have any more questions, we can address the waiver. We'd be looking for a waiver for the required number of parking spaces, and that's 4, 9, 1, 13, parents two, minimum parking requirements. And I note again that that's for a combined use. If the church is in session and the childcare facility is full, that's where they'd, they'd reach their limit, not necessarily one or the other. Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for a waiver for 4, 9, parents 13, two. Nying the waiver would pose an unnecessary or unreasonable hardship.
Who is the second?
Jeff Brand.
Motion by Andy Knapp and seconded by Jeff Brand. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Waiver granted. If there's no other questions, I will read the draft notice of decision. This is to inform you that the Barrington Planning Board has conditionally approved your application reference above. All of the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plans being certified by the planning board. Certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans. Once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final. Please note, if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board. One, provide the New Hampshire DOT amended driveway permit or a letter stating none is needed. Two, any necessary state permits shall be obtained from appropriate departments. Three, waiver granted from 4, 9, 13, parents two, minimum parking requirements to allow 102 spaces where 130 are required. Four, pickup and drop off will flow currently approved traffic pattern. Pickup and drop off will occur at the front door. Traffic pattern may be adjusted as needed for extenuating circumstances. Five, hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Six, fire pit cannot be located in play area.
Jamie, can you stop on that one just a second? Because I need to, so there's been some back and forth between the applicant and I don't, and the fire chief, and I'm not, I know he's, the applicant has filled the fire pit with sand.
It's a man filled with sand. It's being turned into a checkerboard.
Okay. Did we, did we get a sign offered off from the fire chief on this yet?
He, I submitted a letter to the fire chief today from the church stating that they would no longer use it as a fire pit, and he said he was going to revoke their fire permit to use it.
Okay. Okay. So how do, we might need to adjust this from just fire pit cannot be located. I guess-
I think that's easy. We can leave it in there, just so that they know they can't have a fire pit in the play area in the future.
Okay, sounds good. Sorry, just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It'll be an odd one in there, but, I mean, we put one in there. Number seven, fenced area must be gated into remote locations. Number eight, maximum enrollment, 160 children. Number nine, any outstanding fees shall be paid to the town. Ten, the chairman shall endorse the approval of the expansion change of use. General and subsequent conditions, all state requirements will need to be met for daycare. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire. An extension not to exceed one year may be granted by majority vote of the board, so long as it is applied for at least 30 days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least 25% of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan, RSA 67439.
Hey, Jamie, one other change. Because there's not really a plan, a single plan associated with this, we may want to reword this, number two. Let's see, where no active and substantial work required for this approval has commenced on the site within two years, this approval shall expire.
And just stop there?
Yeah. Well, you can add, do the, an extension and whatever, you know, if they don't start operating, but I, the plan, the plan is the part, the plan date is signed.
Save from the date of approval.
So what were you changing? I missed you on that one.
I put the site within two years of the data, from the date of approval, shall, shall expire.
Oh, as opposed to the plan is signed, change for date of approval. Gotcha. Does the board agree with that change?
I do.
They're not doing any site work that has to be done anyway, so it's all irrelevant.
Yeah, it's just, it's consistent language, so we'll, we'll keep, keep the rest of it.
Yeah, because I won't be signing a plan. I'll be signing a change of use, correct?
Yeah.
Expansion of use, rather. All right. If there are no further questions, we entertain a motion to approve 23583 TC dash 20 dash SR.
I make a motion to approve this application.
Steve Diamond.
I'll second the motion to approve 23583 TC S20 SR.
Seconded by Andy Knapp. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Andy Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Steve Diamond.
Aye.
Jeff Brand.
Aye.
James Jenison, aye. Congratulations. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your patience. Take care.
Thank you.
All right. Does anybody need a five-minute break before we move on to the town?
Just so you know, Jamie, I'm abstaining from the, that is a select board member.
Good. For the record, Andy Knapp is recusing himself and abstaining from the town vote.
Actually, I think a five-minute break would be good.
Let's do that, then. It's 7:53. We'll be back here in five, please. It's, uh, seven fifty-three. We'll be back here in five, please. Hello, okay. I got this, yeah. All right. Welcome back. Still waiting on Andy.
Jamie?
Yes.
Just a heads up on, on this next one for the rec department. This is, um, not an approved, disapproved. This is a make recommendations. Just.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. Yep. Town, town stuff. Well, we don't really have much say, but they're being, giving us the courtesy.
Yeah. And well, and it's small and it's, it's over already impervious surface. Now the next one, the town is, um. The, the town hall. I mean, the town currently doesn't own the land. It goes through the, the full.
Radio. I think so. We'll get going as soon as we see Andy come back.
Jamie?
Yes.
Andy recused himself.
Oh, all right. He's not even gonna listen. I'm sorry. Well, then thank you for saying that Barbara. I would've sat here for a while. Um, well, welcome back. Uh, Ron, you back? I don't have your picture, so.
Yes, I'm back.
All right. Thank you so much. Um, we are here for two thirty-three forty-three NR. Uh, a request by applicant to construct a fourteen hundred square foot addition on the existing Barrington Rec. Uh, Jeff, you there? Aliva?
Give him a minute. Connor, are you there? I don't see him listed. The only one I see it says BC is a guest, but I'm not sure who BC is. And everybody else is all normally here.
Connor's here.
Oh, wait a minute. There comes Jeff. I'm letting him in.
All right.
I'm letting him in now. Okay, he's in.
Hi Jeff, welcome. Perfect timing. We're just getting on to your case, uh, starting with the, uh, rec expansion.
Hello there.
Hello.
Hi, I'm Jeff with civil consultants. I got kicked out for a second, so I had to, to reboot and restart.
That's all right. Worked out well. Perfect timing. So whenever you're ready.
Okay. All right. So what you have before you is a, um, a site plan. Uh, what we're seeing right now is the architectural plans, but what, it's an expansion to the recreation department. Uh, to give them, um, some much needed office space. Uh, the area is about fifteen hundred square feet. And what it will be is give some space for staff, um, the recreation director and some storage in that area. Uh, what we did is we went out, had our surveyors go out there and get topography in the area adjacent to the project. We have a site plan that shows some drainage improvements. Um, we received some comments and, uh, from planning and from fire department, th- these plans don't show that. One of those things being that, uh, plans now indicate a fire lane. Um, no parking sign right in front of where the addition is. This addition, uh, takes, um. Infills, uh, some parking spaces that were up along the gym in that area. Uh, we feel that there's enough spaces around between the, the library up the hill. The parking lot on this side and the adjacent school to accommodate the, um, the five or six spaces that we lost with the addition. The new spaces we've added, uh, a designated handicap spot that is to the left of the food pantry area. So that, that area between the food pantry door and the entry. The new entry into the rec department will be wide open, so there won't be no chance for, uh, cars to park there to block that. Egress point from the building. Uh, we still have the, uh, other egress point, point from the gym, which is by that retaining wall. We're going to make some adjustments in there because the existing catch basin is in bad condition. And we're going to redirect the existing piping, um, continue it on its way down, uh, down the pathway. Uh, I guess that's about it. I answer, um, some other questions or anything else you guys have. We are requesting, requesting one, um. One waiver and that is, uh, from, uh, section three point three one, which is the request. To, uh, the requirement to have an existing boundary plan. Uh, we felt that since this project is, um, a smaller area and it's an existing developed section. Uh, that we are, uh, feel comfortable with, uh, the site plan we prepared.
So Jeff, um, and Jamie, where this is, where this is reviewed by the municipality of a municipal owned. They don't really need to, they're not, they're not going to need to have a, ask for a waiver.
Oh, okay. All right. I wasn't sure. So I just kind of went through the process to make sure that like, we kind of covered everything and, and, and kind of did what we needed to do.
No, you did a thorough job. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Yep.
Actually, I have a question on, uh, uh, you mentioned parking, you know, losing six spaces. And there is verbiage that says that you, you think it's be adequate parking. Was there a calculation done? How many are required and how many there are?
Um, I didn't because I looked at the big, if I turn my back to the addition of the, uh, of where the gym is, I've got that big parking lot. Uh, for the school that goes down in that section and, and I did not do counts or, or counts for that.
But why would there be a calculation to show that?
Uh, did you hear the question, Jeff?
No, I did not. I'm sorry.
Uh, I'm sorry. He said, he asked, uh, why, why would you not do a calculation to show that it does meet regulations?
Um, because if I look at what we're doing here for the, um, it's not really a change of use and it's not really an addition of use. This, um, this addition here is, is really just office space to give more room for the people that are already there. Um, if you look at what they have, if you've been in that, the little cramped office space that's right near the mechanical, um, area that's underneath. The, the, the library, um, they're cramped. They have, when they have summer camps out there. Uh, all the staff, when they have a break, including all the teenagers all cram into that one area. So the idea with this is to, to be able to, um. Just give, give more storage, more area, more office space for existing staff. I don't know if, um, my screen seems to have locked up on the video cameras for everybody. But I don't know if you can kind of pull up, uh, Marsha or, or John, the, um, the floor plan. To show, to kind of see what, how that space is utilized.
But you are losing seven parking spots as a result of this addition, correct?
Correct.
And you're doing new constructions, so you have to comply with the new regulations.
So, so to the board, this is, this is not, this is an advisory comment. I mean, it's important to notice if you feel that they're not meeting the regulations. But, um, it's not the same as, is the one you're going to vote on next in regards to the town hall. These are all advisory comments.
Right. So we, so this, the recommendation is that there be a calculation done and, uh, to demonstrate that. Current regulations.
I, I can do that and I can provide that to town staff.
Great. I see there's a new, I see there's a new, I see there's a new registration area. Does that mean? Well, two things. One is the existing office. What is the, what is going to happen with the existing office space? And will the public be accessing or routinely going to the old office space?
Well, I, I, I'm not exactly sure, but when we had discussions and that's more of an architect question. But when we had discussions, that was going to be more turned into, um, some storage that they need to be able to get stuff off the courts and out of the way. Um, so my guess, and I'm just guessing there was that, that area would be for storage. And that now all the registration, all the, the, um, parent interactions and people checking in. Is all going to happen in that vestibule that is down there in, um, if you're staring at the building on the left-hand side.
That's much better. You don't have to go through a potentially busy, uh.
Gymnasium.
Gymnasium. Great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, and, and just from my experience, you, my son has worked there since, uh, he, since he went there as a, as a member, you know, and then became, worked there. Um, up until they close this year. But yeah, that office that they're working out of is probably a twelve by twelve space. You know, packed with stuff, basketballs up on top of filing cabinets. They're really jammed in there. Um, and so when you come to pick up your kids, if it's a rainy day, you go into the big gym, someone sees you, they scream for your kid. So this. It makes sense to have a nice, you know, professional looking pickup, drop off area. You know, especially, you know, now that we're looking at everything through the lens of a coronavirus.
Um, yeah.
But, uh, it, it's, you know, it's, it's definitely needed from like, you know, from the years of dropping my kids off there, that this will be a nice addition for them. And, uh, and talking about the parking space, I think it's important that, you know, if you can count them and, and give that note. Um, but those were always, uh, a hindrance more than a help because the kids would always hang out on the side of the building. And then people would try and park there and you'd be dodging kids and cars. So I think it's, it's almost a, it, it's kind of good to get rid of them. They, I always thought they should have got rid of them before, you know? So, uh, you know, that's just my two cents on the parking.
Yep.
It's a.
I'm sorry.
It's important to know. Yeah. Sorry.
Yeah, Jamie, Jamie, my, my, my comment was not so much that whether it's the merits of the parking. I just think the town should follow the regulations. And you know, in, if this is going to be surveyed, if there should be a survey, then they should do a survey if, or ask for a waiver. If there should be a parking count or a waiver for parking, they should ask for that. They shouldn't just ignore the regulations.
Uh, a- a- and that's, you, you know, you, you're entitled to that opinion. It's just unfortunately not the way it is. Um, just like if the school comes for something, we don't really have much say on a municipal, municipal project. If you look at the RSA, they don't have to meet, um, town ordinances. Um, so that, that, they're, um, so that's what, uh, Marsha was alluding to when she said this is advisory. Uh, there's certain things that they don't have to fulfill. Um, but I think it certainly. Is our role to say, look at the parking. It may be insufficient. You may want to consider adding more parking. Um, type, type comments and recommendations. So I think it's, it's justified and, and e- an easy thing to do. But there's certain limitations on what we can ask them to do as well. Just.
I, I know, I understand that Jamie. Yeah. Well, we're supposed to comment and given what we just went through with the other party on the, uh, that subdivision. You know, new construction with bounty, you know, uh, surveys and all that stuff. To kind of just ignore it here, I think is just not appropriate.
Noted.
Even though we have no authority, that's my comment.
Barbara?
Yeah.
Is now joining.
Very good. Um. Any other comments or questions?
Well. One of the things is on erosion control. There was a note added on sheet L one. It simply says required erosion control measures shall be installed prior disturbance type area. She'll be maintained. A, I think that if there are some that are required, we are used to seeing those. Like installing silk stocks on the plank for the person doing the work. Understands what's required. So that would be comment number one. And, and I will follow that up just to say. In particular, when I look at this, uh, if, if you look at the slope of the parking lot and you see that there's already. A drainage, uh, swale there. That if you're doing construction, if you were having a rainstorm while you're doing excavation. You could, uh, you could adversely affect that, uh, that swale that's down there to be treated. So I, that's why I, I think that, uh, I, I recommend that there be more explicit, uh, direction given on the drawings as to. It's required for erosion controls.
Yep. We do, we do have a sheet L two that has the details on there. And with respect to the placement there is, it comes down to contractors' means and methods during this design build project. We'll be working with the contractor as part of the design build team to make sure that, uh, erosion control. Items are addressed during the, uh, during construction, uh, open excavation for the foundation. And when there's missing pavement and, um, make sure that items are controlled when the new drainage is installed, um, on the site.
Well, yeah, there's a detailed filter burn.
Yep.
I was looking at L one in which, you know, there's no indication of where those berms. Might need to be or should be located. That's why.
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the things that we look at is that we have the saw cut line on that site plan. And what we typically do on a construction site then would, would ditch and pitch that excavation into a common area. Where we could then use filtration in to collect that water before it gets to, uh, creates any siltation. Uh, into the piping before it discharges out. So it's not going to just discharge over the pavement when that excavation is open. Uh, there'll be ways to, to capture any kind of sediment and turbidity that move through the property.
Uh. On looking back at the eight, what is it? Eight, two, one. Well, one thing that the, uh, the requirements are that you provide. You're changing. The parking lot and the, uh. And I don't know if you're going to have any outside lighting. Uh, that's not indicated. There's, there's really no details with respect to illumination, which are things. That, uh, we are looking for in these type of situations. If there's lighting on the outside of the building, that's supposed to be. And also to show that it's adequate lighting in the parking lot. So those, those are things that I did not see that, uh, are, are in the regulations.
I'm not hearing him.
Uh, he was, he was making comment. He trailed off in the end, but, um, in regards to a li- a lighting plan. Um, a recommendation that an adequate lighting plan be, um, be done to show that that area is adequately lit. Now with the, uh, addition as well as, uh, appropriate lighting for the parking lot as a whole. Should, uh, maybe, um, appropriate to look at as well.
Good comment.
Safe, safe and, uh.
I guess my, uh, last question, Jake, can you hear me?
I, I hear you pretty good. You trail off a little bit, but I'm fortunate enough to get, get the gist of it.
All right. Uh, the last thing, a question, is that building sprinklered?
No, it is not.
Okay. Cause I didn't see anything on the plans. If it was sprinklered, that that was going to be extended by the addition.
When they did the fire, um, analysis stuff on it. They gotta put a fire barrier between the pantry and the gymnasium in order to make it comply. So they wouldn't have to sprinkle it. And that's something they got in their works to do too.
Okay. I don't, I don't have.
Jeff, um, there, there is a wall mounted lighting detail. That, uh, shows a full cutoff shielded LED wall pack light. So the point is that it's LED and that it's, it doesn't go up into the sky. It goes down. sky, it goes down, at least in, in that graphic.
Yeah, I see you're referencing Steve on, on L2, the only thing I'll note, Jeff Aliva, is on erosion and sediment control procedures, it says conform with main standards, I don't know if you just want to change that on your file, if it matters.
Again, there's a detail on L2, but here, if I look at A21, I, I don't see any fixtures there, am I missing them?
No, of where the lights would be, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, I don't either.
Can I chime in, we don't have that finished on the, on the building plans, because again, this is a design-build process on where those lights will be located, sorry about that, I got kicked out again.
Oh, so, yeah, so I, I don't know what you missed, but it was a comment about maybe reviewing lighting for that area as well as the parking lot to make sure it's adequate as a recommendation for safety for all activities out there, I think the other comment was, Steve Diamond had asked about it being sprinklered, to which John Huckin said it was not, and there was a fire separation being created in lieu of sprinklers.
That's correct.
And I had meant, and I had mentioned just on L2, it, there was one note that referenced Maine, that you may want to change out for New Hampshire if that's, if that matters.
Yep, it does matter.
Yeah, so I think that.
I did just want to clarify, I did just want to clarify, this is Jesse Tennis, the Recreation Director, um, I just wanted to let everybody know that recently, within the last couple of months, the school did put in a full lighting system within the parking lot that goes all the way up the fire strip of the school as well as in the main parking lot, so just so that we, that is clarified, that there is adequate lighting within the parking lot, I'm not sure, as Jeff was saying, in regards to the actual building and the addition itself, but the parking lot is covered with multiple light posts at this point.
Great, yeah, maybe if the school has that plan, they could just add that into a packet at some point, just so if the information is available, if the board has no more questions, go ahead, Jeff, I think you're muted.
We've been zooming for the meeting, so we haven't been to the building lately, so didn't know you'd installed new lights.
The, if the board doesn't have any other questions, I will open public comment at this time, if there's anybody that has comments, questions, we'd love to hear them at this time. Hearing done, we'll close public comment. Anything else from the board?
Um, just so they know, any comments we will pass along to, to the Rec Department and to the engineer.
Uh, the only other thing I'll mention was just reading through the notes, and I'm sure you've, someone's already mentioned this, was add a no parking fire lane, I think you mentioned that in, in your opening remarks, and no parking in front of the pantry doors, that was the only thing, anything else? All right, there's no action that we need, correct, Marsha?
Correct.
We're just moving right on to the Town Hall.
Jamie, I'd also like to make it known that I'm recusing myself from this and I will be abstaining off to the side.
Very well, for the record, Andy Knapp has recused and abstained from Town Hall proceedings.
Hi Jamie, this is Connor.
Oh, hey Connor.
Yeah, Jeff, yeah, I'll turn it over to you in a minute, just wanted to give the board a quick update, obviously, the application back before you is based on the fact that the building footprint expanded, the building expanded eight feet, adding the square to the square footage as part of the design review process, so that's what necessitated a trip back before you folks. Quick big picture update on the project, the larger subdivision is still awaiting approval from the Department of Transportation, my understanding of the latest update is that may be a project that the Planning Board will see again at some point in the coming months, based on the challenges with coming to an agreement with the Department of Transportation on the road access onto 125, so that's still the root cause of the delays of the construction project as a whole, I'm generally a kind of broadside silver linings, take that kind of perspective, I think one of the benefits, although I would much rather bend in the ground constructing this building by now, one of the benefits is it's given us the opportunity to review the floor plan, go through value engineering steps, make sure that we're working collaboratively with all the department heads, the entire building committee, to make sure that we are putting together a building that is exactly what the town needs at, at this time and given the coronavirus environment, so I think that is one benefit, obviously that's how we got back in front of the Planning Board tonight, is through that design review process, you know, expanding the building footprint from when we were last before the Planning Board, was something that was an important aspect of, of design review, so that's the big picture, certainly I'll let Jeff fill in any pieces of other adjustments that you see from the last time we were before the Planning Board, but happy to answer any questions that the board may have about the project as a whole or the specific update.
Thank you, Connor.
Perfect, thank you Connor. So as Connor mentioned, basically what this whole revision is, is that we've increased the size of the building, and what we did not do was change any of the parking, change any of the access to there, what we did was we slid the expansion of the building to the north, closer to the side setback line and where the new access drive is going to be, we made a couple of grading changes, we picked the building up in elevation a little bit to address some concerns from the Building Committee, and that's really the only changes that we had out there, we took into account the comments from our past review and approval, and I think the plan indicates the, the, the locations where we've made some changes on the site plan with respect to the different areas and, you know, answer questions with you.
Great, thank you, does the board have any questions?
I'm just curious, the cupola, is that purely decorative or is that, if I'm using the right word, is it, does it function for ventilation?
Um, I don't think it's going to be for ventilation, I don't know if it's going to be decorative yet, or if it's going to have some lights in there, that's part of the, the value engineering that we're going back and forth with the building.
Exactly, and the only thing I'll add, Jeff, it's a great question, Steve, in a perfect world, that will absolutely be something that brings natural light into that lobby area, and it'll just purely be a matter of prioritizing during the value engineering process of what, what we have for the budget available.
Because potentially, I don't, I don't know how realistic this is, but for instance, in agricultural buildings, such structures are very valuable for getting heat out, potentially making your cooling and heating, well, cooling costs less.
Thanks for that feedback.
Any other questions, I mean, it seems, I, I've not noticed too many, other than square footage changes.
I would like to point out that the wetland buffer impact no longer exists with the new plan.
Um, that didn't change, John, it's still the, still the same.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, we're right along that buffer, the, right along the edge of that buffer, yep.
And I think this is Connor, the last conversation with that, the, the actual parking area does not impact the wetland buffer, but the idea was that it's possible that during construction activities, there may be an impact to the wetland buffer, and so to be on the safe side seeking that relief was important, just out of an abundance of caution, but at no, even with the previous plan, the parking area and what's shown on the plan didn't impact the buffer, but it was, the thought was about the construction activities.
Yeah, the grading and whatnot, yeah.
Yep, exactly, this is, we had some grading that had to go in there.
Yeah. And that was previously approved on April 21st.
Correct.
So if there's a delay on the broader development, does that mean the town is going to be paying to build the section of the road instead of the developer?
That's a great question also, so that's not the plan, so, you know, obviously, you know, best laid plans, and we're, you know, constantly evaluating and reevaluating, so at this stage right now, if the situation were to arise that the larger subdivision received approval, the state approvals that they needed, specifically DOT, but then alteration of terrain, they've already had their wetlands approval, the, and we're not in a position to begin the construction of the road on the same schedule that the town was interested in beginning the construction of the Town Hall, based on recent conversations that I've had with District Six, the Department of Transportation would be willing to allow the, the town to take construction access directly off 125 where that existing curb cut is for construction activities, with the understanding that no access for use of the facility would be possible through that construction entrance, so that's not, I, I don't anticipate that's what will happen, but to your point on if the schedules don't align on the larger subdivision construction, where, you know, they may be further delayed before the town's ready to get in, we would have an option to get into the lot and start construction activities prior to the road being constructed.
Would we want to do that prior to their approval, they may not, they may not actually under, we could go under construction without the road being there, using that access, but would we want to go forward until the state had, had given them the permit?
Yeah, so, and, and that's part of the calculation, right, so that's part of the risk assessment of the options available, and so it, none of that would happen before approval was granted, and the reason is because that lot doesn't exist right now, so we wouldn't, the, the town doesn't own that lot, the town won't own that lot until all of the conditions of the conditional planning board approval are met, so we, we aren't even talking, the only situation where that might happen would be, like I said, if all, if the developer received all of the approvals, but was not in a position to begin road construction immediately, and that's conceivable, you know, the schedules might not line up, the availability of the road construction contractor may not be there, and so in that situation, the town may consider evaluating using a construction entrance off 125, but it, it would need to be a situation that the town knew that the road was going to be constructed, but it just wasn't on the same timeline, does that make sense, great question.
Yeah, that, that does make sense.
There's no further questions from the board, we'll open public comment.
Have we accepted the application as complete?
I, I believe we have granted waivers and I, I don't know, is, is that appropriate, Marsha?
I, I believe you do need to accept it as complete once again, when I did do the draft notice to decision, I included the items from the prior approval, but you do, you know, it is a, a change to the application, you would need to accept it as complete and open to public hearing.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's close the public hearing real quick and we'll address the application, I didn't see it on the plan, we'll.
Okay, I make a motion to accept, uh, application 223-26C1RC/SDAO-20 as complete.
Second.
Uh, that's a motion by Jeff Brand and seconded by Ron Allard, oh, Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Uh, Knapp, abstain, Donna Masucci.
Succi, aye.
I think Dawn has logged in twice, I've been in echo, Steve Diamond. Steve Diamond.
He's frozen.
Yes, he is, how about you, Jeff Brand?
Yes.
Yes, okay, we got Diamond, aye, Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
Uh, James Jensen, aye, application is accepted as complete, moving on now to public comment, we'll open public comment, if there's anyone still with us that would like to ask questions. Anyone? I only see one guest out there, so we'll close this, close public comment, is the board have any more questions? So are we looking to vote on this again, Marsha, is that?
Yeah. Yep, you'll need to vote on it again, like I said, and I will update the numbers on, on the proposal identification to match the current footage that they're asking for, just make sure they coordinate, but yeah, you should, you should reapprove this, I've included the comments from the last notice to decision also.
And I.
I make a motion to approve application 223-26 parent C1RC/SDAO-20SR.
Allard, second.
Uh, motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Ron Allard, um, do I need to read the draft notice to decision, Marsha, first, or we're just gonna, is it in the record that it's?
Um, it's, it's in the record, but, you know, we traditionally read them into the record, so I, I would do that, we're almost done.
All right, let me, let me read it before we take a vote, and the motion can still stand, um, this, dear applicant, as informed of the Barrington Planning Board, has conditionally approved your application referenced above, all the precedent conditions below must be met by the applicant at the expense of the applicant prior to the plan being certified by the Planning Board, certification of the plans is required prior to commencement of any site work or recording of any plans, once these precedent conditions are met and the plans are certified, the approval is considered final, please note if all the precedent conditions are not met within six calendar months to the day, the board's approval will be considered to have lapsed unless a mutually agreed extension has been granted by the board, precedent conditions, add the following plan notes, a waiver was granted from section 4.7.7, parents 3, minimum depth of cover for storm drain lines of 36 inches, B, a waiver was granted from 4771, site plan regulations, minimum pipe diameter storm drain systems to allow for two 12-inch diameter pipes for 15 inches required, C, a 9.6 permit for impacts, a temporary impact of the wetland buffer was granted, D, all utilities must be underground, E, lighting plan to conform to site plan regulations, number two, revise the following plan notes, add the New Hampshire DES Alteration of Terrain Permit Number, add the New Hampshire DES Subsurface Bureau Certification Number, make the following plan changes, revise storm water management report in page two and three to State Barrington, not Northwood, add monuments to the plan 4.2.3, add two bike racks to the plan 414.4, parents 3, section D, update legend to include erosion control in legend, town council shall approve all easement language as needed, including possible access, any outstanding fee shall be paid to the town, prior to obtaining board signature, the applicant shall submit three complete paper print plan sets and supporting documents as required in Article 3, with a letter explaining how the applicant addressed the conditions of approval, this shall include final and complete reports for all items submitted during the review for the town of Barrington's file, the chairman shall endorse these three copies of the approved plans, meeting the conditions of approval upon receipt of an executed bond for improvements excluding buildings, the town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible 11x17 in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. The town shall retain a signed and approved reproducible eleven by seventeen in PDF format with supporting documents for town records. Where no active and substantial work required under this approval has commenced upon the site within two years from the date the plan is signed, this approval shall expire, and an extension option seen one year may be granted by majority vote of the board so long as it is applied for at least thirty days prior to the expiration date. The board may grant only one such extension for any proposed site plan. All other plans must be submitted to the board for review to ensure compliance with these and other town ordinances. Active and substantial work is defined in this section as being the expenditure of at least twenty-five percent of the infrastructure improvements required under this approval. Infrastructure shall mean, in this instance, the construction of roads, storm drains, and improvements indicated on the site plan, RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine. All right, if that.
I have one question, Jamie. Yes, to the board, too. In the last notice of decision, I can't remember, I think we had a conversation about it, in regard to bonding. Do we want to include that as it currently is, or do we not want to include the town to bond itself? I guess.
I don't know.
This is Connor. The town intends to bond the construction activities as you would with any construction project that, you know, to protect the town's interest. My personal opinion, don't know if you asked for it, is that it would be redundant for the town to bond the project as a development project.
Okay, good then, we'll leave it.
All right, so if that if you could restate the motion, Jeff, that would be great.
All right, I made a motion to approve application two twenty-three dash twenty-six parent C one R C slash S D A O dash twenty dash S R.
Second.
We have a motion by Jeff Brand, seconded by Ron Allard. James Jensen, aye. Jeff Brand.
Aye.
Steve Diamond. I see it, I see his eyes moving. He's giving me a thumbs up.
Aye, the answer is aye.
Aye, there it is. Donna Masucci.
Aye.
Andy Knapp abstained and Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
We have an approval. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, Jeff and Connor.
Thank you.
See you in the future, I'm sure.
Yeah, you got it. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, next up.
Private road.
Private road. Questions? For the record, Andy Knapp is rejoining us, I hope.
I'm here.
Thank you. Anybody have comments on the private road?
Jamie, can I just explain? There was a comment from me, but I also believe included are the comments from the road agent. At the time I had to send this in, he was not available to comment. But he did, he did, he did review it. Let's see. I want to say. The road was actually in good shape, let's see.
And he sent an email that said, I took a look at seven twenty-three McDaniel Shore Drive, and all I can suggest is that they try to keep the runoff along the frontage of the property containing whatever marginal ditch line they can create and make sure to keep it flowing and not pond along the frontage. Also, after construction is over, regrade any disturbed gravel road sections to original condition. The road currently is fairly graded. Fine gravel with a few rocks visible in spots. We're hoping to maybe build up and crown the center of the road slightly to better accommodate a ditch line and cover the rocks.
So we got to tear down and rebuild.
They already received the variance from the zoning board, too.
The board have any, oops, sorry.
I just had a question for John. Is the variance in regard to the shape of the structure based on the lot size?
They got closer to the front setback with their addition, with their rebuild.
Gotcha.
I would entertain a motion to send our standard letter to the Select Board. Reading the Barrington Planning Board at August eighteenth meeting expressed without objection to send a letter to the Select Board stating that they knew of no pending projects or conditions that would hinder the issue of a building permit for map one twenty-four, lot twenty-one, located at Standard Shore Drive. The board concurs with the recommendations of the town planner. Any damage caused by construction must be repaired prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
And I'll add the comments from the road agent in regard to the nature of the drainage.
Okay, and and I don't know if it's possible in the future to ask for the fire chief's comments on access, just so it's noted in that letter, I think. Steve had mentioned that in the past. Is that possible to have him comment on those?
That would make us change the process. I can ask him to, but he usually makes his own comments to the Board of Selectmen. Because so technically, our recommenda, the board's recommendation is from the board, and then the fire chief makes his own recommendation.
But he, okay.
Road agent. So he's represented, road agent is actually representing you folks as a board. But the fire chief makes his own comments. I can ask him. He doesn't tend to get things done quite as quickly as the road agent.
Fair enough. I'll probably ask you that again, but as long as he's reporting to the Select Board, then I'm satisfied. Do we have a motion to send that letter?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Andy Knapp. Ron Allard.
Allard, aye.
Knapp.
Knapp, aye.
Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Jeff Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. Still move to send the letter to the Select Board. Okay, crushing it. All right, we got two separate minutes to review. Do we have any questions, comments, corrections for July seventh and August fourth?
I have nothing.
No one else? We will make a motion to, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for August fourth and July seventh as written.
I second.
I second. Motion by James Jensen, seconded by Jeff Brand. Ron Allard.
Aye.
Knapp.
Aye.
Masucci.
Masucci, aye.
Diamond.
Diamond, aye.
Brand.
Brand, aye.
James Jensen, aye. The meetings are approved as written. All right. Other business reports?
I have one update. Jeff had reviewed the draft of the utilities and facilities master plan. Also, Steve added some comments. They were reviewed by regional planning, there's been some edits made, some some comments included. Kyle's on vacation this week, but we should have a more up draft for the board when when Kyle returns from vacation.
Good. Anything else? Hearing nothing. Our next meeting is September eighth, is that correct? No, September first.
Yeah.
No, eighth. Correct, someone help me.
First.
First, I hear Barbara from the other room.
The first.
Yeah, September first, all right. September first, same time, same place. A motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Enjoy the rest of your night. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
You're safe.
Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Jamie.